Good evening, everyone. The Tuscaloosa City Council will now come to order. We are going to begin tonight's meeting with a prayer, followed by our pledge of allegiance. We ask everyone, please stand. Let's bow our heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Approval of the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes. Voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Minutes stand approved. Before I get to the proclamation recognizing Social Work Month, and it's hard to believe here we are again. I know this has special meaning for Counselor Howard. I've, um, I forgot or failed to mention in my remarks at pre-council of recognizing two local businesses who truly made a difference on Saturday. First, I want to thank Jay Wellburn and Piggle Wiggly for their donations to shelters across Tuscaloosa. And also want to thank Buffalo Rock. Uh, we were running out of water and supplies pretty quickly. We contacted both locally owned businesses, again, let me emphasize locally owned businesses, who came and stepped up for our community. And I just want to thank Chris Gunner at Buffalo Rock and Jay Wellburn at Piggle Wiggly. They didn't ask for any, they didn't even ask for us to recognize them. They just said, we'll help you what you need. Um, it's those kind of locally owned businesses that you appreciate. So I'd ask everybody to join me in giving them a round of applause. I've asked Dr. Rush to recognize them on social media later this week for their contributions. But as I did mention, it is Social Work Month, and so I know we have a large contingency here for Social Work Month. And we would ask all of you to please come forward while reading this proclamation into the record. So don't be shocked. You made, you got here to City Hall, you should come up here and be recognized. Come on up. It is so good to see all of y'all. Please come on up. You know, I've always said the world's going to be changed by social workers. And here at the city of Tuscaloosa, we actually have four of our own social workers that we employ here doing amazing work across our city. Um, I know Ms. Howard, again, as I referenced earlier, this is of special meaning to you because that is your chosen profession. So let me read this proclamation into the record. Whereas social workers have entered the social work profession for generations because they genuinely care about helping to improve the welfare of people, families, communities, and our nation. Whereas the actions of the, whereas this year's Social Work Theme Month is social work compassion plus action. Embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training to have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others in, into action that brings positive results. And whereas, social workers are one of the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States and are pressing for social work interstate licensing compact that will improve mental health delivery in our nation. And all I can say is amen to that. Whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest growing professions in the United States with more than 800,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2033. That is an amazing, amazing stat. Now therefore be it resolved that I Walt Maddox, on behalf of a very grateful City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 to be Social Work Month in Tuscaloosa and encourage all citizens to join the city of Tuscaloosa in celebrating and most importantly, supporting the social work profession. So on behalf of the city of Tuscaloosa, let me present this to this distinguished group here and say thank y'all for what you do every day. Who would like to speak to the City Council? And then I'm going to ask all of our City Council to come down and we take a group picture. But we would love to have all of you speak. Now, you don't have to. But who would like to address the City Council?
Thank you.
It's so good to have you back.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening, everyone. I am Shnavia Hatcher, the Dean of the School of Social Work. And it is a pleasure to provide appreciation to you all this evening on behalf of the students, faculty, staff, and board members that are here to represent the University of Alabama School of Social Work. As the mayor said, it's, it's a, it's, it seems like just yesterday, we were receiving the proclamation last year. So we appreciate having the time on the agenda to really provide attention to what we as social workers do. As I mentioned last year, the school was started in 1965, 60 years ago now. We will prepare for a celebration in the fall. We were started to address the very few social workers that were around the state. Um, at this time, we have over 600 partnerships in Tuscaloosa and the surrounding areas so that our students are able to actually practice their craft and prepare to be in the communities now. And it's because of you and your openness to actually partner with us that we'll continue to address the adverse conditions in the community. Thank you again, and roll tide.
Anyone else? Well, Dean, um, first I'd ask the council to come down. Dean, I, I want you to know, um, one of the biggest challenges we have here in the city of Tuscaloosa is mental health. And we know by, by state law, we're actually not charged with that responsibility. Yet the city has spent over $5 million in the last couple of years dealing with the issue of mental health because so many of our citizens are impacted by it. We realize the benefit at the city of social workers. And we certainly are thankful that you, your college, your team are training these students to fill this void. You're making a difference. You're saving lives. You're saving taxpayer money. So thank you for choosing this profession and thank you for frankly, um, I don't want to step on Mr. Wilson's territory, but it's almost an act of ministry. And thank you for doing that. Mr. Tyner, you're a council president. Would you like to say anything? I see you over there kissing babies. And you didn't even have an election. Maybe that's why. Ms. Howard, I'm going to put you on the spot. You're a social worker. It's your profession. Would you mind saying a few words? Let's, can we get a group picture? See if y'all can get all, all over there just lining up on the yellow line.
Just trying to catch it.
Yeah, you got, thank you.
Yeah, just wherever you can fit in on the yellow line over there. One, two, three. And one sec, I'm going to get one with your phone.
And we have left you a little goodie from the School of Social Work, just to tell you, thank you for being partners with us.
Thank you. It, as they depart, as our social workers depart, I tell you, they bring cheer to your heart to what they do every single day. Yep. Thank you all. Do we have any council announcements tonight?
I will be back at Jack's Saturday after a brief hiatus. But, uh, come see me, I'll buy the first 27 people a cup of coffee.
Sounds good. Any other council announcements besides Mr. Phil being back, back, back? You, you know, Mr. Phil, we ought to get, you ought to get like Jack's logo NIL right there.
They're getting some free advertising.
That's right. And I'm sure Mr. Holmes might have something to say about that. All right. Uh, any agenda item comments by citizens?
No, sir.
We have unfinished business, clerk.
This orders demolition of the structure at 2842 18th Street.
Move adoption.
Second.
Did I hear second?
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. This for the condemnation of 2842 18th Street condemned September 20th, 2024. This property has 45 housing code violations. The house is in revitalization area authorized by Mayor Maddox. The owner has sold the property. The new owner is demoing the property within the next few weeks. The new owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is aware that if it's condemned and demolished, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner is not here to represent.
Any questions to Mr. Williams? Thank you, Mr. Williams, for all your work on this. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the demolition? Seeing none, and again, let me just make certain, just for the record, anyone here representing 2842 18th Street? Seeing none, the recommendation is to vote for demolition? So voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Demolition is ordered. Thank you, clerk.
This approves items A through C on the consent agenda.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 Consent agenda is adopted. Public hearings, clerk.
This orders demolition of the structure at 613 23rd Avenue East.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, Mr. Williams.
This for the condemnation of 613 23rd Avenue East condemned December 12th, 2024. This property has 49 housing code violations. This is a voluntary condemnation. The owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is aware that if it's condemned and demolished, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner is not here to represent.
Any questions to Mr. Williams? Just for the record, is there anyone here representing 613 23rd Avenue East? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this demolition? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Demolition's ordered. Thank you, Mr. Williams, clerk.
This approves a restaurant retail liquor license for Santos Street Eats and Bar.
Uh, Mayor.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this for one week.
Second.
It's been moved in second, table for one week. We still need to go through the, the presentation and have the public hearing. Mr., Mr. Mills.
Okay. Good evening, Councilor Mayor. This is alcohol application 25-009 for Olympus 01 LOC. DBA Santos Street Eats and Bar applying for restaurant retail liquor license. It's located, I'm sorry, it's my.
1014 7th Avenue.
Yeah, it's located 1014 7th Avenue. Hours operation Sunday 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Tuesday 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And then I talked to the owner and they want to change the hours from Wednesday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. as well. All my reports have been filed with the City Clerk office. Officer Champion or Chief Blankley will come and get a report. All about applicant to answer any questions yet.
So, uh, the hours, go ahead, Chief, I'll let you speak first. And then, uh, it sounds like we've got this problem solved or at least addressed.
Um, the PD had some problems with this application. We felt like the 1:30 closing hours Thursday through Saturday, uh, turned it into where it could become a bar and a public safety hazard. We are completely okay if it closes at midnight because at that point, we feel like it's a restaurant. That crowd changes between midnight and 2:00 a.m. and that takes away the bar environment. So if the petitioner is good with midnight, we have no objections.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Busby.
You know, since we have not voted on the motion to, uh, table, I'm going to withdraw that for the moment. And here, I know we've got some residents here to speak. I see the owner and his family in the back, but this was the big, I'd like to hear these and then I'll decide whether to proceed or make a motion to table.
What I, what Ms. Johnson and I decided is, um, I recognized the motion in the second was to move it on to the table. So at this point, having the hearing and then you can make a decision so you don't feel compelled. Right now, we're still holding the hearing, so there is, I haven't recognized as a matter of procedure, a motion to table.
Well, let's, let's hear what, uh, the public comments are and if the owner and, uh, family want to address those as well, we can, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
My name is Giovanni Rosco. Uh, my restaurant is a 1014 7th Avenue and Santos Street Eats and Bar.
You can just address the City Council. Any questions for the owner? Or would you like to make any comments before the council asks you any questions?
Um, no, sir, not at the moment.
And we may call you back up, but look, we've got, uh, other comments, I think, from the neighbors. And thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
My name is Randy Coleman. I reside at 630 54th Avenue East, Tuscaloosa. Um, I am here representing my church. I'm an elder and the current board chair at First Christian Church Disciples of Christ. We're located at 627 Bryant Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the leadership team of the church. Uh, we have significant concerns about the lack of designated parking for the restaurant and the late hours, which I understand have now been modified somewhat, and I appreciate that. And the safety of UA students who live in our residential house, okay? Our parking lot is behind the church and it's across from the proposed restaurant site. It is a private lot for church members, groups, uh, the students who live in our residential house, and also UA students who have purchased parking permits from the church. Our parking lot is in use throughout the, uh, throughout the day during the week and also routinely on Monday through Thursday evenings for various community groups that, that use it. Um, we have a sign posted that requires parking permits to use our lot and that unauthorized cars will be towed. In the past, we have experienced some misuse of our parking lot, uh, including illegal behavior, and we're concerned for the safety, particularly of the students who live in our residential house, uh, with people who may attempt to use the parking lot late at night, you know, without permits. Uh, so that is, you know, the, the late hours of operation, which I appreciate, have been modified somewhat. Um, and the lack of designated parking for the restaurant. I know those, those of you who have lived here a long time, uh, remember the Storyville restaurant that was there. And I used to enjoy also. It used to have parking for the restaurant, but it's now a UA parking lot. So it's not, so there's only street parking there. So for, for these reasons, um, you know, we respectfully oppose the, the location here.
Is that your, where I just outlined and read, is that your site? Do I have the right side? Right here?
I'll be honest, I'm not good with the diagram. So, um, our church, we're not Trinity Methodist. We are First Christian, which is down. Our parking lot comes off of 10th Alley. You enter our parking lot off of 10th Alley.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's it. And the, the church is on the right.
Yeah.
Then the fellowship hall, and then the student house is on the left diagonally across from the restaurant site.
Any questions?
Ms. Coleman, I appreciate you and, uh, the, the other elders that you brought in coming in and talking with us today.
Well, I appreciate your time to, that you made to, to meet with us beforehand. It was very helpful.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address their City Council?
With the owner, owner, come on back up if you would.
Can I have a question for this one?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
For her. Ma'am, do y'all already have some signs at your church saying that you're the only ones that can park there?
We, we have a sign at the entrance to the parking that says it is permitted parking to the right. Our students park to the left and that unauthorized cars will be towed.
Okay.
But we don't have anyone there policing throughout the day or in the evenings to enforce that. So we mainly use it on game days when people have tried to park there when they shouldn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would, Mr. Counselor Busby has a question.
And I'm sorry, remind me your first name.
Giovanni.
Giovanni.
Yes, sir.
I've gotten to talk with, uh, Giovanni and his, the owner and his family, uh, last week, came in and presented the Public Safety Council. Frankly, they made a good impression. There are, there are concerns about this location, this size, and, um, the activities. I met with, um, and, and you and your family did much to allay those concerns, okay? Ms. Coleman and her group came in today and we got a chance to talk. And really almost coincidentally, Chief Blankley happened to be in there and we got to talk with him as well. And so after all that, I, I am not going to make a motion to table. I am going to, uh, support your application.
Thank you.
A couple of things. Uh, number one, moving that closing time to midnight did much to allay our concerns that this is a bar that serves food, not a restaurant that serves alcohol.
Yes, sir.
I want you to succeed in this location. It'll be good for my community.
Thank you.
If you have not met your neighbors across the street, I want you to go over there and meet them and y'all open a, a good rapport of communication. Because she, they have legitimate complaints. Parking, like everywhere in that area, is going to be a problem. You can't exercise absolute control over parking, all right?
Yes, sir.
But you can do what you can. Same with the litter and the beer bottles and things like that. There are other bars that have addressed this downtown and they've done it in such a way as they have made supporters of their neighbors as opposed to adversaries.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
I believe you and your family can do that. Uh, I would recommend, um, approval of the license based on that.
Second.
So, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, ma'am. When, once we, unless a council member calls you back.
I'll be glad to let her, did you want to?
If you, Ms. Coleman, yes.
I just would like to say that we did watch the video of the public safety meeting that was last week and were very impressed with the presentation that was made. We love a good restaurant. We love to be involved in the community and I would expect that many of our church members and other groups that meet there will patronize the restaurant. Uh, so we appreciate the, the time of the council and, um, the restaurant owner and look forward to developing relationships, so.
Thank you much, Ms. Coleman. Giovanni, go get them.
Wow. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the City Council? Yeah. Seeing none, we have a motion in a second, so voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 The restaurant retail liquor license is approved. Good luck. Resolution in ordinance is not of a general nature, permanent operation, clerk.
This approves the less than seven days special events retail licenses for JNS Bartending LLC.
Move adoption.
Second. Moved in second, Mr. Mills.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is ABC Alcohol Application 25-010 for JNS Bartending LLC. Applying for special retail less than seven days for the following premises. Uh, Jewish City Arts Festival located at 618 21st Avenue and Barbecue and Blue Jeans at 4922 Mc, right, I'm sorry, McRice Ferry Road. All my reports have been filed with the City Clerk office. Officer Champion give us support. All about applicant to answer any questions.
Okay. Officer Champion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Police Department doesn't have any objections to either of the, one of the applicants.
Okay. Any questions of either Mr. Mills or Officer Champion? Okay. We'd ask the applicant, although we all know him well, to please come forward, give his name and address. I think you should have intro music when you go over there.
Marcus Jones, 13 Forest Drive.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Good luck.
Thank you.
Voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Application is approved, clerk.
This will approve the less than seven days special events retail licenses for Downtown Entertainment LLC.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, Mr. Mills.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is ABC Alcohol Application 25-011 for Downtown Entertainment LLC. They're applying for special retail less than seven days at the following premises, uh, for the Sigma Nu Voyage Darty, um, 32225 at 990 University Boulevard, ATL Parents Weekend, 32925 at 332 University Boulevard, uh, and KA Dixieland, 32725 at 416 University Boulevard. All my reports have been filed with the City Clerk office. Officer Champion give us report. All about applicant to answer any questions.
Okay, Officer Champion.
No objections for this applicant.
If the applicant would come, please give your name and address. Another legends.
Brandon Hanks, Downtown Entertainment, 504 21st Aldman Avenue, Tuscaloosa.
Any questions?
Yes, absolutely. What is it, a Boy Voyage Darty?
That is a great question. I guess saying goodbye to everybody. I guess saying goodbye to everybody.
So is it Boy Voyage Darty or Bon Voyage?
There we go, yeah.
It's mistimed.
Oh, not Boy Voyage.
It shows us Boy Voyage.
It probably is. Tony did that. That was Tony.
You told us what a Darty was.
Darty is a date party.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. You got that.
I have no further questions.
I did not notice a boy.
Any other questions, Ms. Strange? Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This approves the less than seven days special events retail licenses for Party Down LLC.
Move adoption.
Second. Moved in second, Mr. Mills.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is ABC Alcohol Application 25-012. Party Down LLC applying for special retail less than seven days at the following premises. Uh, the D, DKE Undertakers 2025 at 946 University Boulevard. DKE Parent Weekend, 946 University Boulevard. We have Cap and Sigma Grand opening at 282 University Boulevard and a Beta Theta 60th anniversary reception at 960 University Boulevard. All my reports have been filed with the City Clerk office. Officer Champion give us report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Officer Champion.
No objections from the Police Department.
If the applicant would come forward, please give your name and address. Hey, we got all three legends in one night. We're living life right tonight.
Lauren Sheemaker, 13800 Wire Road, Cottondale, Alabama, 35453.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
There you go. Voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Resolution's adopted. Clerk.
This authorizes the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services for amphitheater repairs and maintenance.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize a professional study and consult services agreement with Duncan Coker Associates PC.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Alabama Pro Wash.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Apex Civil Construction LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This rescinds a contract with Tent World and authorizes a minor public works contract with Dark Matter Window Tent.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Building Specialties Company Incorporated.
Move adoption.
Second. Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This will authorize a minor public works contract with American Fence Company.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Phil. Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Taylor Electrical Contractors Incorporated.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.